Meeting on April the 21st, 2020. Before we get into the agenda for the committee of the whole, I have a short statement to read regarding our procedures tonight. As a reminder during this Zoom meeting, please remember to mute your microphone, your microphone when you are not speaking and then unmute yourself when you would like to speak. During the portions of the meeting where there are opportunities for public input and attendee in the meeting will want to utilize these Zoom controls to raise your hand so that I may recognize you to speak. If you were calling in via phone only, you can press star nine on your keypad to raise your hand. With all that being said, this is the third time we've done this, really the first time with a a pretty significant agenda, so we can all be patient and hang in there and we'll do the best we can. And it's good to see everybody tonight. And so we'll get started. The city council should have the minutes from the April 7th, 2020 committee of the whole meeting or there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, do I have a move to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Carry on. Okay. Board of Education, Mayor Pro Tim win.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, I would like to nominate Melanie Chambliss for a second full term uh beginning June 1, 2020 and May 31, 2025 for the Board of Education.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor of Melanie Chambliss for a second term on Auburn City School Board, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is the renaming of Mike Hubbard Boulevard. Before we get into that, I'd like to ask the city manager to walk us through exactly what are the steps that have to be taken in our, in our ordinance and our laws to change their street name. Mr. Buston?
So this evening, if the council wishes to rename Mike Hubbard Boulevard, we would need to have a vote of the group to send this or remand it to the planning commission. Planning commission would address it at, I'm assuming their next meeting with a recommendation back to the, uh, to the council, which would probably come to you at your maybe second meeting in May, uh, possibly that soon.
All right. So before we move ahead, are there any questions for Mr. Buston on the procedure that we'll, that we're possibly looking at tonight? Any questions on this procedure?
Uh, this Kelly, do we have to propose a, a new name at the same time or simply? Is it a two-step process, one to remove and one to rename?
We would, uh, the council would propose the name that they would like to see it named. Uh, and they would propose that to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to recuse myself from this conversation, therefore I'm just going to turn my video off while y'all discuss this.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
What about the procedure of having the signs removed tomorrow?
You want me to answer that? You want me to answer that?
Yeah.
You can't remove. We, we can't remove them until we legally change the name of the road. So until the city council legally changes the name of the road, the road remains the same. Is that correct, Mr. Buston?
I would.
Okay.
But the existence of the signs does not determine whether that road's name is, remains the same, correct? If the signs just come down, the road's still the same name. What, what is the possibilities of having the signs removed?
The signs cannot, the signs cannot be removed. They are, uh, there to identify for 911, for emergency responders. Uh, they're there as a public safety as much as, as anything. Uh, and they have to remain until they are, are replaced.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding procedure? Okay, we'll continue. I've recently received a letter from Mr. Hubbard asking the city council to please remove his name from the sign. At this point in time, I agree with Mr. Hubbard that it is now time to change the name of the sign. I would offer to the city council and make a motion that the city council remand to the planning commission, the changing of the name of Mike Hubbard Boulevard to Bent Creek Road.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any comments or questions on that?
Uh, yes, are we going to have some alternative names or is that the only one we're going to consider?
This is my, this is only my opinion on this, Mr. Griswold Kelly. I would suggest to you that the simplest thing for us to do is name it Bent Creek Road because that is the road that actually fills into Mike Hubbard Boulevard. If there's a wish to rename this for another individual, um, that will be its own debate and own discussion for another time. It's my suggestion that this is the simplest and, uh, the best way for us to handle this at this time.
Mayor, could I also add?
Yes, please go ahead.
That I have spoken with Dr. Hato from the, the airport and he also, while this is not official from the airport or the airport board, uh, he thought that it would be much easier for them if the name of the road went to Bent Creek would be easier for them to direct people to find their location since if it would just be an extension of, of the Bent Creek Road.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just for clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That was your suggestion, correct? That was that what you're proposing is the Bent Creek Road.
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct. Yes. Any other questions? Okay. So we have a motion in the second to turn the, to remand this to the planning commission who will consider this and then it'll eventually end up at the city council as Mr. Buston says. So we have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that, that motion carries. Mr. Buston, questions on the agenda?
Council, I did send you later or late this eve, or this afternoon, some text edits to the small cell ordinance. I don't know if all of you got them, but basically there were three text edits and I'll go over them right now. Normally this would be on the dais in front of you, but in this situation, I sent that to you via email. So in section 1B28, we want to add the sentence, "This term does not include any distribution or transmission structure used by an electric provider for the transmission of electricity or electric service." In section 1B43, we wanted to add, uh, a, a parenthetical expression to the following sentence where it says, "The term does not include services provided by an electrical provider." We want to add or its parents, affiliates or subsidiaries. And then in section 12B, we want to add the sentence at the end, "Nothing herein shall be construed to grant the city council jurisdiction over a dispute between an applicant or provider and an electric utility regulated by the Alabama Public Service Commission." These were just text edits. They did not make it into the version that was sent to you on Friday. So this evening, when you are addressing this issue would be with these edits in that, uh, in that document.
Any other questions for Mr. Buston? Okay. Do I have a move to adjourn the committee of the whole?
So moved.
All right. Committee of the whole is adjourned. We will start the city council meeting at seven o'clock. That's approximately about four minutes from now. Um, I believe we'll stay, Greg, will we stay live right here until then? All right. So you'll be live. Uh, you might want to mute your, your, your microphone there and we'll get started for our audience and people that are watching. We'll get started right at seven o'clock. Thank you.
I think we hear you.
Okay. Sorry about that.
All right. We'll call it order tonight. Sovereign City Council meeting for April the 21st, 2020. Welcome everybody to Zoom and welcome to all the people who are watching us through Zoom or that might be watching us through Facebook. I ask you again to be patient with us as we go through a pretty good agenda tonight. Uh, we're doing the best we can. We do think we have a set of rules and understandings that helps us to be efficient. Um, but anyway, hang in there with us and thank everybody for their participation. Roll call, Ms. Baker?
Valerie, you need to unmute your microphone.
Got it. Dawson?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Griswold?
Here.
Hovey?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Witten? Here. Anders?
Here. Earlier tonight during the committee of the whole, we took up two considerations. One is, uh, we elected to reappoint Ms. Melanie Chambliss to a second full term on the Auburn City School Board. And the council has remanded over to the planning commission, the renaming of Mike Hubbard Boulevard to Bent Creek Road. Under announcements tonight, I want to remind our community, there's been a number of articles and information about this recently, but we are lagging behind on, uh, participating in the census. And I know that we're all very distracted now and that's to be expected. But, uh, participating in the census takes very little time, less than 10 minutes. And it's very important that we're all accounted for here in Auburn. So please take time to participate in the census and encourage those that are around you and in your family to participate as well. Um, I want to let our community know that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month and soon we'll be signing a proclamation with, uh, members of the community who support uh, the victims of sexual assault and, um, we appreciate everything that they do to help Auburn become a better and safer place to live in. We've had so much going on with the pandemic. I just wanted to give you a flavor of all the people that I have personally talked to in the last couple of month, couple of weeks. Uh, Senator Doug Jones a couple of times, Governor Kay Ivey once and her chief of staff a couple of times. Lieutenant Governor Will Ainsworth one time, State Representative Joe Lovren a number of times, Senator Tom Watley a number of times, Opelika Mayor Gary Fuller almost every day. Um, Senator, Senator Richard Shelby's chief of staff, Dane Cuttrill, a couple of times. Membership in the leadership of East Alabama Medical Center almost weekly. Um, we're, myself and Mr. Buston in particular are having multiple meetings and discussions with all of these uh, leaders to find out exactly what the next steps are. As you saw today with Governor Ivey, she made some announcements, but really didn't make a lot of substantial changes. Our expectation is that her order that she issued on April the 3rd will be good through April the 30th as she set and that, um, and we believe that maybe sometime next week, early in the week, that she will set the changes in the table for what happens in the future. But for right now and for our community, the governor's expectations of early in this month are the same expectations that we're going to follow for the next week, uh, week and a half until next Thursday is over with. If you've got any questions, please let us know on that. There was another stimulus passed by the federal government this afternoon that will hopefully be another assistance for payroll protection for many of our small businesses uh, who signed up last week, but they actually ran out of money of the program. I would encourage those people to recontact their financial advisors, their bankers, and make sure that they get in the queue because there's some more money potentially being provided if the House approves that bill tomorrow. And we're also hoping that the federal government will issue some stimulus money for municipalities. Um, we do believe looking at our budget as we plan for the future that we will be facing shortfalls. I'm sure y'all aren't surprised to hear that. Um, Jim has the staff working on that right now. But because we depend on sales tax and occupational tax, both of those have been hit very hard here in the last month. So we have certainly have been encouraging the federal government to help us overcome those shortfalls and we continue to encourage them to do that. Speaking of trying to help different people, um, here is a T-shirt that is now being sold and you can see, uh, represents, uh, the councilman Smith, he has it on tonight and it says, "Keep Auburn rolling." Uh, this is a T-shirt you can buy in downtown Auburn and actually you can allocate part of the proceeds to your favorite business. So, uh, I hope everybody on the city council, if you've got 20 extra dollars in your pocket, will go buy and buy one of these and support a small business in downtown Auburn. Those are all my announcements. Is anybody on city council who might have an announcement tonight?
I don't have an announcement, but I do, uh, have a question.
Okay.
Uh, my que, my question is, um, I, I, I heard you talk about, um, Mayor, about the, uh, loans for the banks and the list of businesses. Will we get a list of those businesses that apply?
No, ma'am. That, that's, I guess that's proprietary information between them and the federal government and the bankers. I, I'm sure the federal government probably puts that kind of information out, Connie, but Jim, we don't, we don't receive that at the city, do we?
So we, we won't know who, who all apply?
Not intentionally. We won't know that, Mr. No, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions in the council? Oh, I'm sorry, Connor.
Oh, that's okay. One other question I wanted to say, you said the governor, uh, the governor say that things have remained the same until the end of the month. Um, can you, can you sort of elaborate? At, at, at the first of May, is, is they're going to resume, uh, businesses opening back up or? You know, what's happening? I was on that call. Actually, I, I was on the land when, uh, we talked with Mike Rogers and I didn't really get a lot of understanding from some of the things that he said. So, so first businesses will open back up?
Well, those are the rule, the state has authority over those kinds of determinations. And the governor put out an order earlier this month that set the tone for, and help me, Mr. Buston, all the things. She, she talked about all the businesses that can and can't be opened. We talked, she talked about groups of 10 were no longer allowed. Um, what was some of the other things that she, I mean, she made some very specific requirements. She even talked about drive-in churches and those kinds of things. Um, and there's been some pressure from Lieutenant Governor put together a task force that, uh, was called, you know, opening back up Alabama and he made some recommendations last Friday. And then the president also made, uh, put out a, a three-phase plan of how you could reopen your state. And I, I believe there was some expectation that the governor might move some of her openings of the cities and openings of the businesses up. But in her press conference today, she did not do that. And so it's my opinion, um, that she's going to hold tight for her original set of mandates and orders until the 30th of this month, which is next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, Mayor, where are we at on the, uh, local state of emergency? I know we, we've renewed that. Are we still in the first renewal or the second renewal?
Mr. Buston, I believe we're in the second renewal now.
Well, will we need to be, will we need to look at that again or?
That's a great question, Brett. Uh, Jim and I have not talked about that in the last couple of days. Uh, thank you for reminding us of that. Jim, I believe that went through the end of the month, right? The second renewal?
I think it did. And I think we will hear from the governor, as the mayor said, if we believe that we need to come back to council and, and get that renewed for a third time. We can certainly do that in our first meeting in May. Uh, but as the mayor said, I think we'll, we may see some softening, uh, in, in parts of the state and maybe even in our part of the state. Uh, as we see our numbers are starting to decline, our, our infection numbers are starting to decline.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up, Brett.
Yes, sir.
Any other announcements from the council?
Yes, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank our police division that worked on the business homicide out on 280 this past week, last Friday, where someone came into our beautiful town and took a life that was no need to take. And I want to speak to the family of Mrs. Nash. Our thoughts and prayers are with the entire family and hope they can, uh, find some solace in the fact that this person responsible behind bars. Our police division, as my understanding, did an excellent job. He went on to Dadeville and murdered two people there and then went on allegedly there and then allegedly on, in Birmingham. I believe we had officers in Birmingham assisting them and they did a fine job. And I think all the men and women of our department that stayed up and lost a lot of sleep behind this, especially during the time, the times we're going through right now, I just really appreciate it. Makes you proud to be an Auburn resident.
Thank you, Tommy. Totally agree with you. What a very disappointing and unfortunate circumstance. Again, our community is victim of someone driving over to our community and committing a heinous crime. And, uh, it's very sad, certainly for the family of the deceased and for the business out there that was impacted by an employee being killed on site. That's got to be unnerving, but our police department has done an excellent job and I agree with you. Thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else with an announcement?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, in my time of isolation here, I've been, uh, I've became a member of the East Alabama Mask Makers, uh, Facebook group. And I wanted to, uh, give the public some, um, information about this group. The CDC is recommending that everybody, when they go outside, wear some type of mask. And, um, the group that I'm involved with is sewing, um, masks by the hundreds. We've had something like 5,000 just locally produced since this all started. And, uh, I want to encourage the public, if you are in need of a mask, you can, uh, contact us through the East Alabama Mask Makers group on Facebook. Uh, you can put in a request and, um, some incredible sewists within our community will fulfill your order without charge. And I also encourage any other sewists in our community to come and give us a look. And, uh, if you've got some time on your hands, like a lot of us do, uh, we could, we could really use some help with, uh, extra sewing of masks. To date, uh, the group that we've been involved with has sewn 15,000 masks, upwards of 15,000, uh, statewide. So that's a pretty terrific grassroots level response to this.
That's terrific, Bob, and thank you for your participation and thank you for all those volunteers and people who are putting this together. They are certainly those unsung heroes that happened in the community during these trials, uh, that we're living through. And if you'd extended my gratitude to each one of them that participated, I appreciate it. But thank you for making that announcement. Anyone else on the council have an announcement they'd like to make tonight? Okay, we'll move forward to citizens' communications on items for the agenda. We will try to govern this just like we would if we were at the council chambers. If you have any comments that you'd like to make on tonight's agenda, um, you have three minutes to do that. Please start off by giving your name and address for the record. Now, I would say to you that there are a number of things in our agenda tonight that have public hearings. And if you want to speak to something on our agenda tonight as a public hearing, I might interrupt you and encourage you to wait to that time to speak, um, uh, when it is, uh, when it comes up on our agenda. All right. Great. Is there someone? Is anyone? Okay. At this point in time, no one has, uh, no one wants to speak, so we'll move forward to the city manager's communication.
First item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Anyone? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The consent agenda carries.
Under ordinances this evening, we have item 7A is the adoption of regulations governing small cell, cell wireless facilities on the city's rights away.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is any one of the council that has a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none, Valerie?
Hey, Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes. This time do I have a motion to approve these regulations?
So moved.
Go have a second.
Second.
All right. I have a motion second. Any questions or discussion?
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Buston if he could just give us a quick overview. I know I'm not the only council member who received a number of, uh, emails from people who had specific concerns about the, the installation of these and, uh, I, I'd like to, I'd like to hear some kind of public response to those emails.
It, well, from my, from what I read, the emails that I saw, I'm not sure if I saw the ones that, that you all got, but the ones I saw, I think there was a misunderstanding by, uh, some people that, that the COVID-19 virus was, um, acting as some type of, of a, uh, cover for the wireless carriers to install, um, for the wireless carriers to install um 5G networks. So I, you know, that, I, I know nothing of that and that has not been the case. What we're dealing with here is an ordinance that allows us to control our right of way. Uh, should one of these companies want to install uh their uh facilities in our right of way, we have no ordinance to govern that. Now, it is my understanding, and we have reached out to our state legislators, uh our representatives and our senators, uh to ask them what they believe is going to happen when the state legislature comes back into session. They are scheduled to come back into session on the 28th of this month. It is believed that they will not come back into session on the 28th, but they will come back into session the first part of May. Uh, they have to finish their session by May 18th. So, and it is, we have been told by both our elected officials in Montgomery and by representatives of the league that when they do come back into session, that they expect that the bill that is before the state legislator, legislature to allow uh wireless carriers to install 5G facilities in cities without the participation of the local government uh will pass. But in order for us to maintain control of our right of ways, we have to have an ordinance in place passed by the council prior to uh April 30th. If that were the case, even though the legislature will pass the law uh allowing carriers to uh install 5G, we would be grandfathered and the city of Auburn would be grandfathered so that we would not come under that, under that state stipulation. So basically tonight is the ordinance that, and, and staff has been working on this for quite some time. I did not put it on our first meeting in, in April, uh since I was hoping that the state would not move forward uh at the state level, um taking away our rights to control our own right of way. But under the advice of our, of our representatives, we had put it on the agenda for the council tonight so that we could be grandfathered should they enact that legislation in the state.
Thank you.
Well, if we, if we adopt this ordinance, what will be the approval process in the future if a carrier wants to install a 5G tower?
Basically, they have to make uh application, uh they would have to abide by the, the the provisions of the ordinance. Uh, we would have the authority to deny them or the council would have the authority to approve or deny them based on aesthetics, based on the right of way being uh already overcrowded, if it were. Uh, based on a variety of things that we would not, that would be out of our control if we didn't have such ordinance to allow us uh local control.
Thank you.
I would just add for the council that when I went to the first, my first ever Big Ten Mayor's meeting uh this past summer, there were two, two significant issues that were being talked about there. One of them was simplified sales and use tax and one of them was 5G. Uh, this is, this has been a concern with all the mayors of the 10 largest cities in the state of Alabama. And I believe you've seen an editorial in our paper that uh Mayor Gary Fuller has put together from Opelika. So this is a, a pretty significant statewide concern. All right, any other questions or comments?
A quick question, the, the photographs are in the back of this, this section, this agenda item. These are things that would be acceptable from an aesthetic perspective, is that correct?
I don't, I don't know if I can answer that as they would be acceptable. These are the type of things that 5G are, this is what they are putting up. So basically, um, if you look at on the light poles, those look like light poles. I would think from my perspective, those would be aesthetically uh acceptable. Some of the things you see here, like the uh the devices that are put in between the lower wires and then the, the power wires are up above, I'm not sure that power companies would allow that. Uh, at least Alabama Power may not allow that type of thing. So I don't know if, you know, if that would be allowed. Uh, some of these other ones, this would be, you know, these are things that have been put up. It would be up to the, the council to decide if that was aesthetically acceptable.
The reason I ask that is that the title of the exhibit is the, the standards, uh City of Auburn small cell wireless infrastructure aesthetic standards. So it gives you the impression that if this is the standard in the, the applicant something that's visibly the same as this, that it would not require additional approval or whatnot. So if these are just suggestions, that's one thing, but if these are the standards, uh, I mean, do these standards, are they binding?
Uh, every, every time that a carrier comes in, they have to get the approval of the council. So at that time, they would uh demonstrate what it is they are trying to do. And then the council would decide at that time whether it was uh something they want to do or not. Again, these are, these are examples of what is, is being put up in 5G areas. This is not everything, but these are examples of what is being put up in other areas.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question, whether they're examples or if this is a standard that we are ordinance, I'm sorry.
We get some feedback, Greg.
Kelly, uh, I, I don't think we heard the last part.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll repeat. Um, that's, uh, that's why I asked the question, whether or not these are examples or whether these are standards that we are establishing by approval of this resolution. If they're examples, but if, if they're standards and we're approving them, then it almost, you know, it speaks along the lines that this is okay if they look like this. Uh, I don't have a problem with it one way or another, I just wanted to make sure that we're, we know what we're approving. If it's, if it's a, a standard that, that we're accept, we're happy with and we're acceptable, or if it's simply an example, and then we'll work from there.
I'm very, I'm sure that they are examples, but let me allow
Mayor, uh, section 6B uh describes these as examples um under aesthetic requirements of the proposed ordinance uh explains that these would be potential examples.
Okay, thank you, Brett. I, I think this discussion displays that before we codify this into rule of law, we need to clarify what these illustrations are. Maybe, Mr. Buston?
Yeah, I'm sure they're examples. I, I could have our uh city attorney answer that question for you. Rick, do you want to weigh in here?
Certainly, the, these are examples, this is not um deemed acceptable for every application. As the city manager said, each application, the location, the actual physical antenna and other supporting structures um would be reviewed uh through the city. You know, DRT would look at the design, there would be other processes that are in place to make sure that the pole or the other supporting structures were located in an appropriate place within the right of way. How it looked physically with regard to the, the um aesthetics is still subject to being reviewed and/or amended and/or like many things in our design manuals, they are updated and revisited frequently. So this is a place marker in time to beat the legislature back into session and to give the city the opportunity in the future to address in more detail these types of questions and concerns. But this gets us started, but in no, in no way is it set the absolute minimum, you know, standard. There will be review of each particular applicant.
Hey, uh, thank you, Brett, for finding that. I knew it was in here somewhere, I just couldn't recall where it was. Um, but the uh, I would just suggest that we change it to examples rather than standards in the, in uh N X A. But if, if that's going to slow up things, then I have no problem with it as it is. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments to the council? All right, so we do have a motion in a second. Valerie, roll call.
Dawson.
Did you say Dawson?
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 7B1 is the Auburn City Board of Education requesting annexation of 31.89 acres located on West Farmville Road, east of North Donahue Drive and west of Miracle Road.
I'll introduce this ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
I have a motion second, is anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hearing none, Valerie?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve now?
So moved.
I have a motion second, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Valerie, roll call, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes. Item 7B2 is Vicki Hawkins requesting annexation of 4.5 acres located on the north side of Sandell Road near its intersection with Lee Road 26.
I'll introduce ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
I have a motion as second, is anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Valerie, please.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor? Taylor? Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion as second, any questions or comments from the council? Seeing and hearing none, Valerie, roll call, please.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 7B3 is Tommy Ambus and Samantha Wink requesting annexation of three acres located at 254 Lee Road 57.
I'll introduce ordinance and ask unanimous consent. Second.
I have a motion as a, in a second, is anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing none, Valerie?
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion as second, any comments or questions? Seeing none, Valerie, roll call, please.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor? Whitten? Yes. Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 7C is David Slocum requesting to amend ordinance 3137 for the addition of 10 acres to be included in the PDD with revisions to approved land uses in section B2 and E2. Additionally, the previously approved recreational rental dwelling is reverted to a golf course. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item, a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
I have a motion as second, is anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing none, Ms. Valerie?
Hey, Parsons?
Yes.
Nina?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, if there's anyone in our audience who would like to speak to this, please let us know. Mr. Greg, is there anyone, could I just raise their hand?
John Hartley.
Okay. Mr. John Hartley, we are going to try to connect you. See connected?
Can you hear me there?
Yes, well, you can hear you, if you give your name and address for the record.
Uh, yes, my name is John Hartley and my address is 775 Bruce Court. Uh, Bruce Court is a small circle that uh turns off of DeKalb Street. And the uh proposed uh golf course uh venue would be on the corner of DeKalb and East University there.
Mr. Hartley, I believe, I believe you, you're confused. Your, your, the item I think you'd like to speak to is later on in the agenda, it's item 83. This is actually located now at the AU Club.
Okay, sorry, different golf course.
Yeah, it's okay, man, then we're all, we're all trying real hard in a unique setting, no problem. So if you just hang on, there'll be time a little bit later, okay?
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, is anyone else who would like to speak to this? Okay. Seeing no one in the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing now. Do I have a motion from the council?
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion as second, is there any discussion or questions from the council? Seeing or hearing none, Valerie, roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor? Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson? Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 7D is various zoning ordinance text amendments in relation to the Cox and Wire Road, Road corridor focus area study. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item, a public hearing is required.
Mayor, I don't know if this is the proper time to do this, but I, I would like to table this uh particular ordinance to June 1st, first meeting in June. I, I don't know when we need to bring this up, but I talked to one of my constituents and, and they're not really prepared to go forward to this point. And I'd like to give them more time to speak to me and speak to the council. So I respectfully request that it be tabled to the first meeting in June.
If that's a motion, I second it.
Okay, Mr. Buston, how do we, we've got a motion as second to postpone until first meeting in June? Is that, okay?
Yeah, I think we just need to take a vote on that.
Okay, so we have a motion as second to postpone this until the first meeting in June. I do not have an exact date on that at this point in time. Would be the first Tuesday night in June, all right? We have a motion as second. Mr. Buston, would we do this by roll call?
No, we just do a voice vote.
Okay, so we'll do this by voice vote, all right? So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this will be postponed to the first meeting in June.
Item 7E1 is the approval of the working capital loan interest subsidy program for Riverbank and Trust. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
I have a motion as second, is anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing anyone, Valerie?
Taylor? Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, if there's anyone that would like to speak to the council regarding this, please raise your hand on your computer and uh we'll ask you for your name and address for the record. Greg? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve from the council?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion a second to approve. This is the actual business is jewelry by design, so I have a motion second. Valerie, roll call.
Taylor. Whitten.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes ma'am.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes.
Hovey.
Yes ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Mia.
Yes ma'am.
Anders.
Yes. Item seventy-two is the approval of the working capital loan interest subsidy program for Troy Bank and Trust. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion second. Does any one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing anyone? Ms. Valerie.
Whitten.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes ma'am.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes.
Hovey.
Yes ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Mia.
Yes ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Anders.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve from the council?
So moved.
Have a motion second to approve this. The name of the company is Southern Roots. Their business is Barbaritos, all right? Have a motion second. Valerie, would you please do the roll call?
Whitten.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes ma'am.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes.
Hovey.
Yes ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Anders.
Yes. Item seventy-three is the approval of the working capital loan interest subsidy program for Bancor South. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion second. Does any one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing anyone? Ms. Valerie.
Dawson.
Yes ma'am.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes.
Hovey.
Yes ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Anders.
Yes. This time, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to address the city council, we'll please ask you to give your name and address for the record. Greg, do we have anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve from the council?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the council? Seeing or hearing anyone? Ms. Valerie, roll call.
Dawson.
Yes ma'am.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes.
Hovey.
Yes ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Anders.
Yes. Under resolutions this evening, we have.
You got one more, Jim.
Number four. Did I miss one?
Yeah.
Oh, seventy-four.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Item seventy-four is the approval of the working capital loan interest subsidy program for Southern States Bank. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Okay, that was a motion and a second. Does any one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing anyone? Ms. Valerie.
Hey, Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes.
Hovey.
Yes ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Whitten.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes ma'am.
Anders.
Yes. At this point in time, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to address the city council regarding this, please give your name and address for the record. If you would like to speak to us. Greg, do we have anyone? Okay. We have no one that would like to speak to us, so we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion from the council?
Seven.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion, comments?
Yes, I would like to move to divide the question. So, meaning we address each of the four, uh, four loans independently.
All right, Mr. Griswold has put a motion to divide the question, which means we would, we would approve these as individual loans as approved, as opposed to approving all at once.
Second.
With the bank. Okay. So we have a motion in a second for that. Jim, would this be just a voice vote? See any discussion? We'll have discussion. Any discussion?
May, may I ask what the purpose of splitting them up is, or what the reason is for that? Uh, certainly. Uh, each of the other three that we've approved were transactions between a single bank and a single business. This particular one is between a, a bank and four separate, uh, loans. I understand it's the bank's business to make the loans and they have, have done so and choose that they are, um, that's their business to make loans. Uh, we are in the business of, uh, watching over public funds and public funds will be used for the interest payments on each of the four. So I believe it's, uh, appropriate that we address them, uh, individually.
Do those four, do those four entities meet our criteria of being within the corporate limits and having a business license?
They do.
So that's, that's the only criteria that we need to consider, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would like to, uh, further that discussion. There's one particular one. If we divide the question, we can talk about it at that point.
Any other comments on the motion to divide the question, which has been seconded?
So are you, are, Kelly, are you trying to take each one of these out and make a, the decision as to whether or not to approve the loan?
No, I want to approve whether or not the city enters into a, um, whatever this agreement is called, the Economic Development Commercial Loan Interest Subsidy Agreement with us and the bank. So I want to see if, if we should enter into four separate agreements with the bank instead of one that covers four different entities.
Jay, did you have a follow-up?
No, I'm still just not really clear as to why we would need to set them, separate them individually if we were, if our agreement with the city was with the bank. I mean, if, if next week we have twenty-seven loans with four different banks, are we going to go line item on those, or are we not just trying to approve an agreement between the city and the lender?
If it were up to me, we would have twenty-seven different ones, yes. As we evaluate appropriateness of using city funds to pay interest to a particular business for, uh, to back up their loan.
But our ordinance, our agreement was, had two criteria. One, that they're in the incorporated limits of Auburn and have a current business license.
I'm not sure that that is the stated agreements. We'd rush through that thing pretty quickly, but, um, we said within the city limits. Uh, again, if we divide the question, I can address my concerns about one or, uh, in particular. Or I can do it every now and then, if you choose.
Any other comments or questions?
I think if, uh, Councilman Griswold has a question about one of the, uh, applicants, that we could just address it now and, and then vote on all, all of them together. Is that, now, now I'll be correct, Jim?
I, I think you would have to vote on whether you want, the council will have to decide if they want to vote on these individually or not. Um, I think the way this, the program was set up that we had anticipated that they would not be voted on individually, but that doesn't mean they can't be. Uh, but the whole idea, as Councilman Holy said, is that our agreement is with the bank, not with the individuals. It's with the bank. So I'm not sure what would be gained. But, but you, in order to go ahead with what you want to do, the first thing is to vote to see if you want to do these individually or not.
Yes, uh, per, per Robert's Rules of Orders, I'm entitled to ask for the question to be divided. And then the, the council as a whole can decide on whether or not to approve that. So if you don't want to approve that, built that way. If you agree with me that wants some discussion on the individual ones, then vote to divide.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Well, I mean, but, so, just to be clear, these, all these businesses have met the requirements.
They have, correct.
With, with the operating in and having a business license in the city limits and all those that we set forth in our ordinance.
They, they have met the criteria we have set forth in our ordinance, yes.
Okay, I mean, if a council member wants to vote down funding for businesses during this time, then let's go for it. Well, I would like to explain the reasons some more then. That's, that's not the, the, um, the intent. I am, uh, fully behind this program and have supported it from day one. Uh, I just want to make sure that if we're going to spend Auburn citizens' money, that the benefit of that Auburn citizens' money goes to Auburn businesses and not to businesses that are based outside of Auburn, who have separate entities out of Auburn, to include out of state. Uh, the businesses are registered through the State Department, Department of State as, uh, the representatives are not in Auburn. And so I want to make sure in that, that, uh, we are taking care of the public's funds. There's, the bank has no, it doesn't matter to them. They're going to approve a loan one way or another. But it's up to us to decide if we want to use city money, our citizens' tax money to support and pay for the interest on a particular loan.
Counsel, the question is, do we want to divide this? Divide the, the decision on this? Jim, I asked you again, is this, is this a voice vote or is this a?
I would just do a voice vote, but.
Go ahead if you have something else you might.
If I would. And I, I guess. I'm, I'm a little confused by that we have certification in the documentation that these are Auburn businesses operating within the corporate limits of the city of Auburn, which are the criteria of the program that was put in place. Even if we were to discuss these individually, I'm not sure what that brings. I mean, you're, you're comfortable, you're fine with discussing them individually, but they still all, uh, have met the criteria that would have been set in place. And they verify in two separate places, signed up, not affidavit, but signed statements that, that say that they have done that. Uh, so. But if you want to do them separately, then you vote to do them separately, so just a voice vote.
And what, and some of those certifications are, are from the lending institution verifying that they've, they've got that they qualify and they meet our, our, our criteria, and they do operate in the city limits of Auburn. Right?
That is correct.
It's from the, the lender that verifies that.
The lender verifies that, we verify that, staff does as well, and there's a sign here, um, by the applicant that says that they, they do that, so.
Yes, and I agree. The application says they do business in Auburn. But the individual corporations that are going to benefit from the loan also does business outside of Auburn. They have all their other locations within the city of Auburn, apparently don't need this loan. And that's fine. They can determine that if, uh, if need be, but if they choose to receive the money, are they going to use it for that particular business? They can use it for other Auburn businesses. Are they going to use it for their Columbus, Georgia locations? Are they going to use it for their Opelika or Montgomery locations? Those are all questions that I think the public would like to know, uh, more about. If we vote on them individually and everybody wants to approve all four of them, then there's, there's certainly no harm, uh, as compared to voting for all of them. Uh, I personally am fully in support of three of the four, and I have questions on the fourth. And so I, I don't want to be put in a position where I vote for things that I'm not happy of, and I don't want to penalize, uh, other businesses because there's a portion of the ordinance that I don't agree with. So that is why I've asked for division of the ordinance. Division of the question, excuse me. But how are we?
I think it's a fair point, Kelly. I think you bring up a, a fair point. Uh, I think, uh, all, all of these businesses uh, are, are struggling and I totally empathize with it, with, with them. But also, I, I, I also can support the idea of discussing further, uh, each individual applicant. I, I don't have a problem with that at all. I think it's a, it's a, uh, a council doing their due diligence and I appreciate you bringing it out.
Are we going to send a question here to every business that has a approved loan of where they're spending their dollars? I mean, that's not us between the bank and the business, and if they meet our criteria, they meet our criteria. I don't think it's, um, for this council to get into the, the minutia of an individual's, um, financial statements. If they are a business in Auburn and they are paying sales tax and employing people, just like every other business in Auburn, then I don't understand why we want to get into whether or not they have an investment or another business in Opelika or Columbus. There are multitudes of people who have multiple businesses, and you don't know that they haven't applied for grants or PPP funding or EIDL funding in other regards for their other businesses. I personally would like to call the question, and I'd like a roll call vote on this division of questions motion, please.
Ms. Whitten has called the question. I need a second on that, Jim.
Yes. I, I'd just like to point out again, you know, a, a bank, you know, there's nothing that we can talk about tonight that's going to satisfy your concern.
No.
Kelly, I mean, that, there's, how are we going to determine tonight whether or not that entity uses that money in Auburn or in Pensacola or wherever? Because that bank has, has gone through. And a, a bank has a, you know, any, any federal backed lending institution has a catalog of, of regulatory concerns, fair lending, uh, principles and restrictions that they've got to abide by and can't even ask, you know, if they qualify for the loan, they have to give the loan. We can't ask it, what is, you can ask what it's going for, but I'm just saying you can't. There's nothing that we can talk about tonight that's going to answer your question, and the bank has already vetted and is, is on the hook for any regulatory concerns that we, we know nothing about.
I'm not asking people to, to vet the loan. I'm asking people to vet whether the city should pay the interest.
Mayor, the question.
Ms. Whitten called the question. Do I have a second on calling the question?
Second.
All right, have a motion second. So we'll do a roll call now, whether to, what is the exact words you want to use again, Kelly? Please say that again. Divide the.
I move to divide the question.
Okay, so Mr. Griswold has a move to divide the question. All right, so if you want to divide the question, which means we would take these one by one, you would say yes. If you don't support dividing the question, you would say no, okay?
Mayor, can we have just a little more discussion?
Sure. Well, no, Ms. Ms. Whitten has called the question. We've got to move forward. Mr. Dawson.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Valerie.
Okay, Dixon.
No.
Griswold.
Yes.
Hovey.
No.
Parsons.
Yes.
Smith.
No.
Taylor.
Yes.
Whitten.
No.
Dawson.
Yes.
Anders.
No. Five, five minutes, okay. All right, so we'll move ahead. Is there any other discussion?
I'd kind of like to, I'd like to suggest that maybe, uh, in, uh, with respect to Councilman Griswold's, uh, request tonight, that maybe going forward, I'm, I'd be quite happy to have, uh, each applicant, um, each single applicant for us to, for us to review in the future. I don't know how about, how I'd, uh, go about requesting that, but, or whether or not it's worthy of discussion right now. As we look at these, I, we anticipate obviously a lot more people taking advantage of this, and I certainly encourage everybody to take advantage of it. It does seem a little, um, confusing to me that we would have, uh, a number of, a number of applicants on one, on one, um, issue here on one, on, on one loan with one bank. I, I'd be happy to see them divided. But, you know, I don't know how to move forward with that request.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I, I'm in full agreement with what, uh, Councilman Witten and Councilman Hovey said. I think they made a very valid point and spoke, and stated very well. However, I do think when a, a council member brings something up that he wants to have discussed, I think in a sense of being transparent, we should probably discuss it. So in the future, if it can be done and some council person has a problem with one, uh, loan being approved or, 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 or didn't think we found the ordinance like we should, then I think we should set it aside and at least just talk about it.
Mayor, can we discuss it right now?
Well, I think we need to put this behind us. We've got a motion and a second to approve this, this set of, uh, loans with Southern State Spain that support Auburn Pediatric Dentistry, Auburn Pharmacy, Auburn Hospitality Group and Champion Bistro. Mr. Bust, don't you think we need to, my suggestion is we get this vote done?
Right.
Um, and then we could, where could we continue this discussion? What would be your suggestion?
Again, I don't know what else we could do. The, the, as, as Councilman Hovey said, our agreement is with the bank. We have a signed certification from the applicant that says, and I quote, "The applicant certifies that this loan and interest subsidy support is necessary to remain in business within the city of Auburn upon commencement of normal operations." That one statement makes them liable if they were lying. Uh, there's section thirteen A ten one oh nine A, which provides that a person commits the crime of unsworn falsification to authorities if with intent to mislead a public servant in the performance of his duty, the person submits any written statement which he does not believe to be true in the application for, uh, for the cuny, the cunyary benefit. So we could take these individually. It doesn't matter, except that there's nothing we can do is, is either approve them or not based on the criteria of the program that was put in place. So it, you could take them individually, but you can't necessarily deny it just because you don't like one business or the other.
And Mayor, I wasn't speaking on that. I was speaking on the ability to, for Councilman Griswold to have the floor to put his objections or questions on the record, whether or not we break it out or not. We still are open for discussion at this point, correct?
I think, I think we could probably discuss that. As the mayor said, it's probably good to get rid of this one. I finalize it with a vote and then decide how you want to.
Can we do that under other business?
We can do that under other business.
Okay. Why don't you save your comments for other business, Brett?
And, um, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to, uh, to defer that. I think we've had, uh, my points were made during our discussion on whether or not to divide the vote. Obviously, as we didn't get there, so we can discuss that under new business about how we go forward is fine with me. Thank you, Brett.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we, we have a motion and a second. So Valerie, will you do a roll call to approve these, these four agreements with Southern State Spain, please?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor? Taylor? Witten? Yes. Nelson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Mayor, one moment, please.
Okay. One moment.
No, we checked the video. We did not.
So Mayor, we evidently did not open a public hearing for seven E two, which was the Troy Bank and Trust Southern Roots. When can we go back and and redo that to have the public hearing?
Okay. Okay. So did the council hear that? We, we failed to have a public hearing for item seven E two. That is the loan affiliated with Troy Bank and Trust Southern Roots, which is Barberito's, and that is my fault for not calling for a public hearing.
So let's go through the whole process.
So if it's, so counsel, what we need to do is go back through the whole process with this particular item. All right? So do I have a motion?
No. Second.
I have a motion. Seconds. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening?
Well, this was an ordinance. Yeah. You have to introduce the ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Mayor, I'll introduce the ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Second.
See, one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Seeing none. Valerie?
Witten?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor? Anders?
Yes. All right. This time we'll open the public hearing. If you would like to address the city council, please give your name and address for the record. Greg will let me know if anybody would like to speak to this. Okay. Seeing no one. Do I have a motion to approve from the council?
Senator.
Have a motion. Seconds. Any discussion or questions? Seeing no hearing anyone. Valerie with the roll call.
Hey, Witten? Yes. Nelson? Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor? Yes. Anders?
Yes. All right. Back to eight. All righty. Under resolutions this evening, I have item eight A one is Brett Basquen requesting conditional use approval for a pool and pool house at Woodward Oaks
on property located at four hundred and gray Oak Circle. Planning Commission and Amnesty recommended approval of this item. A public hearing is required.
If we're.
Second. I have a motion in a second. This time we'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone that'd like to address the city council, please give your name and address for the record. Greg, do we have anyone? Okay. Seeing no one. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight A two is Brett Basquen requesting conditional use approval for a fast food restaurant with drive-through on property located at the intersection of East Glen Avenue, East Sanford Avenue and, and Sand Glen Drive. The planning commission announced the recommended approval of this item. A public hearing is required.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion. A second. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Any one of the, um, any citizen would like to address city council, please give your name and address for the record. Greg, do we have anybody?
Okay.
All right. This time seeing no one. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item eight A three is John Roney Watson requesting conditional use approval for pickleball courts and miniature golf course on property located at the southwest corner of East University Drive into Calab Street. The planning commission recommended approval of this item with a vote of eight to one. A public hearing is required.
Have to approve.
Have a motion in a second. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to address city council, please give your name and address for the record. Mr. Hartley, I'm not sure if that's you that's back now, but, um, I'm going to call on you first since, uh, you were first to the line earlier. So, Mr. Would you, Mr. Hartley, would you give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, my name is John Hartley. My address is seven, seven, five Bruce Court. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, uh, that's a, a small circle off of DeKalb Street, which is, uh, uh, the same road that the, uh, uh, new facility would be located on. Um, my, my concerns, uh, are mainly, uh, with, uh, noise. I know that, uh, because of the, the, uh, zoning of, of the property, that, uh, we really don't have any, uh, grounds to ask for, uh, them not to be open late at night. Uh, but I know that in, in years past, when there was, uh, uh, Touchdowns, which was located at the corner of DeKalb Street and, and Opelika Road, each year they would have their, their, uh, outdoor, um, uh, crawfish boil and it would generate an enormous amount of noise. This new facility would be outdoors all the time, uh, and it would, it would be a restaurant and bar, which would, uh, there, they've already said in, in the planning commission meeting that they're planning on it being open until around 10 o'clock at night. But, uh, you know, I, as I, as I understand it, uh, we would really have no grounds to ask them not to keep it open as, as long as any bar in town, which I believe could be open until around two AM.
Good.
If I could.
Yes.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Um, just a point of clarification on that, that the, the golf courses, that he's correct that the restaurant is a permitted use. So if that's what the out, the concerns for hours of operation are, then that would not be fair game for the council's consideration. But the, the golf course component is the conditional use.
And, um, Mayor, if I may, real quick, um, that's because it's a miniature golf, but a typical golf course would be permitted by, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
One of the many unusual, uh, uh, one of the many peculiarities of the ordinance, unfortunately.
If, if I might, uh, you know, my thought is that, uh, most people would go there with the idea that they would be able to purchase uh, drinks at the bar and then continue on outside to, uh, actually play the miniature golf. Uh, so it would be an outdoor, uh, created event.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Hartley.
There's Kathleen.
All right. Ms. Kathleen, I'm going to try to pronounce this right. Giostino?
That was excellent, Mayor. Thank you. Perfect. See, it's not as hard as it looks, is it? Um, I would like to add to, I, okay, my name is Kathleen Giostino and I, um, am the owner of a house at eight twenty-two Cheyenne, which is just off of DeKalb and just down the street from this proposed development. I, um, have questions about the term mini golf. I'm really concerned that that might be a misleading term that we're not looking at what a lot of people consider to be something like putt putt golf. We're actually looking at a different type of golf. So I think we really have to have clarification on what sort of golf course this is in order to address some of the concerns that people in the neighborhood have, including concerns about noise, including concerns about the environment. And I think one of the biggest concerns that many of us have is traffic. We already have really bad traffic problems in the Shelton Mill neighborhood. And I've contributed, um, I've communicated with Ms. Witten about it. I've communicated with, um, the mayor about this. And we've had no movement whatsoever to help us with some of the problems we already have. Problems that have been intensified by the development on Twin Forks. We really can't use Twin Forks as an artery into our neighborhood anymore. And this golf course dementia, um, development, regardless of its scale, and again, I'm confused about its scale. This threatens to cut off one of our other arteries into our neighborhood. An artery where we already have a lot of traffic and traffic moving quickly, both on DeKalb and also off of university. We have had children hit by cars in our neighborhood. Nothing has been done to address this, and I just fear that this development is going to make traffic problems in our neighborhood worse. I would also like some quiet, um, clarification of why the developer, Mr. Watson, feels that he needs such a large waiver. He's asking for two hundred and eighty feet out of three hundred feet. That's almost like asking for the entirety of this distance to be given to him, compromising, um, the neighbors to this development. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay. Um, Mr. Bust, now I presume that Mr. Cotton would answer some of these questions.
I think we have some staff that could, Mr. Cotton and, and Ms. Frazier could probably answer some of those questions.
Um, I, I'll, I'll be glad to start. The, as you can see on the site plan, the only point of ingress and egress to this property is directly from East University Drive. Um, if you orient yourself to the site plan, you'll see that the clubhouse restaurant component is generally centrally located. Um, it is the actual lawn area, the lawn golf area that really is the portion of the property that is most closely, um, located to the neighborhood. Uh, and the impacts, as far as that's concerned, should be relatively minimal. As far as the difference between regular golf and mini golf and lawn golf, lawn golf somewhat of a relative novelty. Um, the, the holes are much, much shorter. The, they're longer, they're longer than a putt putt course, but much, much shorter in distance than a traditional golf course. The, the striking tool that's used is a typical golf club, but the ball is somewhat larger than a golf ball and it actually has holes in it. So it's like a wiffle ball. So while you, you have the same swing, you're hitting a ball that's not going to go very far. So it's, um, it's quite less, uh, it, it's much smaller and, and not anything like a regular golf course. And if you knew, if you were to familiar size, familiarize yourself with the size of the property, the number of holes that are actually proposed there, it kind of should, it gives you a, I think, a pretty good feel of size and scale.
Okay. Um, Ellison, did you want to address the, any of the other issues? I'm assuming Ellison is on here. Our city engineer? Maybe not.
Forrest, let me ask you a question, Forrest. On the golf course part, um, will they be participating at night?
Uh, it, it could, yes, their activity, he did mention the possibility of being open until 10:00. I think he, I think he was thinking that would be more for the actual restaurant use. He did provide the staff with some examples of lighting that he's proposing and it's very, um, it's not, it's not like driving range lights. These are fairly low level lights, um, that I would think almost provide more for security than actual golf course use, if what he's representing to me is accurate.
What about buffering Forrest between this property and the neighborhood and the roads?
There will, there will be significant buffering. I did want to clarify something. Um, uh, the lady that spoke earlier about the waivers, those, there were two waivers requested. One was related to the, to that distance and that relief was granted by the planning commission because I, I think that they believe, and I believe that they're accurate in believing this, is that this is a CDD zone property which, which permits a myriad of uses right on a major arterial. And in the overall scheme of things, this is a, this is a fairly decent use for, in my opinion, a neighborhood to see come in, um, given the fact that it's owned comprehensive development district. The other waiver that the planning commission did not dispose of, dispose of speaks specifically to some of the buffering requirements. Most specifically, there's a fencing requirement along that southern property line that's part of the buffer requirement that goes up against the, this DDH zone neighborhood, many of the neighbors of which we're hearing from tonight. The applicant requested some relief in that requirement simply because he felt that the, the, the building materials, there's two different options for what we call a type three fence, and he felt because of the, the length of the fence, it would be um, somewhat cost challenging to do that. And he wanted the opportunity to present some other alternatives to the commission that he felt might be equally or even more helpful to buffering. And so that particular waiver request was postponed and that'll be back before the planning commission on May fourteenth.
Uh, Mayor and City Manager, the city engineer is on the line, but was having microphone problems. She's dialing in now. Um, and Greg will put her on as soon as she gets, gets in the Zoom. Okay?
Thank you.
Mayor, do you have another person that wants to speak?
Okay.
Victoria Santos.
Okay. So we do have someone else. We've got another participant for the, uh, public hearing. Ms. Victoria Santos.
Hi. Um, I just have a two questions.
Um, I just have two questions. One, oh, so I'm Victoria Santos. I live at 876 Tulane Road. And I'm probably the furthest person from, so far from the people you've heard. But, and I, I don't disagree that this is a good use. I'm just curious about two things. One, what are some of the ramifications, you know, this, there's a lot of proposals and there's kind of some things just going kind of by his word, right? So we're saying that the lighting will be directional and not that bad. But is there any way that we can reinforce that? Is there anyone that's going to come by and check it once everything is up? I'm, I'm a little unfamiliar with the process, so I'm just asking about what happens with that.
We do, we, we have what we call foot candle requirements, which is a way of measuring light intensity on adjacent property.
Okay.
So that is, that's a requirement in the zoning ordinance that need not be specifically called out by way of condition, assuming we believe our lighting standards are appropriate, and we do. If there was a complaint to be directed to my office, we actually have light measuring equipment and we will go out to businesses and measure that lighting at the property line to make sure that it doesn't surpass what it's allowed. The most common complaint is, as you would imagine, car lots. But certainly that, if, if someone felt the light was too intense, gave us a call, we could go out and check that for you.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. And my second question is, I think last time Mr. Watson spoke, he didn't actually have the sale of the property yet. Is that what the conditional use is? Is he trying to get this approved so that he can purchase the property or where does that stand? What's the status of that?
Most likely, yes. It's going to be pretty typical for a business venture to want to make sure they can, they can actually do on the property what they would like before they actually execute a contract for purchase. So I think you can be, rest assured that he's waiting to see how this approval goes before he actually acquires the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santos.
Mayor, we do have the city engineer on.
Okay. Allison, Frazier, city engineer. Mr. Boston, you might have had a, was there, remember the specific questions we were?
I think it was about traffic.
Yeah.
Yes, as part of the conditional use, we did have in our staff comments that a traffic impact study may be required as part of the development review and approval. And it is a unique development, but we do want to look closer, closer at the traffic once the development is submitted for review. And it's during that time we will look at any of the adjacent intersections and see what those impacts are. One of the items that came up during planning commission was the concern about traffic at DeKalb and East University Drive. So we, we as staff will actually look at that intersection perhaps in the fall, once we get to normal traffic conditions.
All right. Thank you, Allison. Good to hear from you. Is there anyone else for the public hearing? You see, you went great?
No.
Okay. We will close the public hearing. Are there any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple. First, I'd like to just acknowledge Mrs. Giostino, I'm probably not saying that correctly, her comments about traffic and so forth. And we have been looking at that area intently and as Ms. Frazier indicated, probably a traffic zone would be warranted. That is a much older section of town that did not require back in the day sidewalks and speed calming devices. So that is not off of our radar. So I just wanted to address that. And then I appreciate the other comments from the neighborhood. That, if I may ask, it is, the traffic will enter and exit off of East University and will not go into, off of DeKalb or off of Twin Forks area.
Forrest, that would be a question for you.
That is absolutely correct.
And that, and the entrance and exit has a terminus so that it does not continue through to any other portions other than their own development, proposed development.
That's correct. It does not, as it's currently shown, it is not stub out to the property line and it is, and it is a private drive.
Okay. And then can you tell me what PB 1, 2, and 3 are indicated as?
I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that. Those were proposed pickleball courts that were initially submitted and contemplated and advertised as part of the conditional use approval. During the public hearing at Planning Commission back on the ninth, the applicant made it clear that he was going to not develop those pickleball courts and was pulling that from his proposal. The Planning Commission did not seem, did not deem fit to place any kind of condition to that effect. But certainly, if that's something desirous of the council, that would be within the council's purview. But the, the applicant emphatically stated that he had decided not to construct a pickleball court.
Okay, and it also reads that this golf course is really a smaller scale lawn golf, not your traditional mini golf, and that it would be limited to three person teams? Is that, did I read that correctly?
That's, that's based on the, this was all very new for us. So we did a lot of conversation, mostly the, the staff planner on the case, Katie Robison. But there were a lot of questions we had for the applicant so that we could understand the, the activity itself, just so we could effectively review it, make sure we reviewed it appropriately. Whether or not they employ three person teams, I would have to take the gentleman at his word.
Okay, and there seems to be a decent amount of buffering around what I, I guess, consider the restaurant clubhouse from the parking to the adjacent lots. And in your opinion, is this kind of a, would you perceive this as a less intense commercial development proposal versus what could, could be developed at that corner?
There's absolutely no question in my mind. This is almost a best case scenario.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yes, I, I took a look at the planning commission's meeting on, on this matter today. And my impression of the applicant was he was speaking quite extemporaneously about whether or not he'd have the pickleball courts there. And it didn't inspire a lot of confidence in quite frankly, that he just more than emphatic, for my impression. Also, the 300, can you hear me?
You're breaking up. Bob, you were going in and out. We lost you. I'm not sure any of us heard everything that you meant to tell us just a second ago, man. You, you might want to start over.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay now?
You're, you're stopping.
I, I think you, your signal must be a little bit weak.
All right. So I, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, hey Bob, it might be better if you just stopped your video and just kept your microphone on. That will help with the bandwidth.
Okay, I'm going to try again. Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you.
So I, I went and had a look at the planning commission's streamed meeting on this. And I was not particularly confident by the applicant. He didn't seem to speak emphatically about the pickleball courts at all, in my impression. My impression was that he was undecided and it didn't inspire a lot of confidence in me that what he was proposing had any definite quality to it. Also, it does concern me that the, the standard practice of 300 feet buffering between a commercial development and a neighborhood is, is pretty much wiped out. If you look at the, the site plan, you can see that the rear of a couple of those DeKalb residents fall very close to the border of, of the activities of this development. So it is of concern to me that the quality of life of those residents in, on DeKalb are affected by this. And the uncertainty of just what, what we're, what we're getting, it did not, it did not inspire a lot of confidence in me. That's it. I'm done.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else in the council would like to speak? Or have comments or questions?
Uh, yes. Well, actually, I think there's two different actions that were proposed. Actually, there were three, as Forrest mentioned, and one was withdrawn. But there were, we're still remaining to look at two actions, conditional use and the waiver. Are we, I guess, again, we're lumping all this stuff together, but so if.
Just a point of clarification, the waivers are within, the waivers are under the purview of the planning commission only. It's the conditional use consideration that's the only matter for the council to consider.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay. And my other question was fencing along University into Cal. The, there's provisions that says that for driving ranges, find it here, that they have to provide y'all a layout of property and location of all driving ranges, putting greens, fences, and structures. Have they proposed any fencing along University into Cal? Because again, I'm not familiar with these many lawn things of what kind of, what kind of ball are you using? But I'm concerned about balls going into traffic.
Yes, good question. Those standards that you're referring to, as you mentioned, speak specifically to driving ranges, which is a totally different animal. This is a, this is a much, this, this, the ball does not travel far at all because it's, it's big and it's plastic and it's got holes in it. So it's very light. So it's, it's really more like hitting a wiffle ball, not a golf ball.
Okay, well, yeah, I didn't, that's why I'm not sure what kind of ball because you're referencing driving range here in the, on page seven. I didn't know if the same standards applied or not. So.
Forrest, I agree with, I mean, I'm with Kelly on this. We certainly, even though it's plastic, we certainly don't want the balls to be going into the streets, do we? Or the roads, do we? Is that a concern of yours?
I'm sure they'll, yeah, I'm sure there'll be fencing.
Okay. I mean, East University Drive has a lot of traffic. Cars could be going pretty fast right there.
Understood.
Any other questions, comments?
Fencing, I, I appreciate it. It's not like a real driving range where you have to have the, you know, the monster high fencing. But I'm assuming that if we're trying to keep balls from going into traffic, it'd be a significantly larger fence than what you would typically see along University Drive or something like that. So where would the approval fall? Who, who, what the fence looks like and the state of and that kind of thing? Don't want to.
Typically, what would happen is when, when all of, when it's disposed of, when this request is disposed of at the planning commission council level, and of course, the, the fencing is actually still going to be discussed at the planning commission meeting next week. But when all that's said and done, there'll be an administrative review process that'll follow on the heels of that. And that's where we get down into the weeds, so to speak, a little bit more. And certainly fencing will come up and will be addressed.
Okay, thank you. And I do say I agree with Bob's concerns about the 300 yard buffer or distance between commercial and residential. I think they're asking for such a significant reduction in our standards that it raises concerns to me.
Can we, can we get, review that one more time? Jim, can we discuss what that reduction in the variance, where it is actually on the, on the location and which side it would impact?
So Forrest, could you go over that for them?
I can. If you refer to the site plan that's in your packet, you can see that, you know, the, the north arrow where it's pointing up, the area of greatest impact is going to largely be in the southeast area of the, of the development. So where that, where the farthest red hole is. That's where you, that's where you have, that's really the closest distance from the commercial recreational use, which is the golf course in this case, to, to residents. But that, that's also where the buffer requirement and the ordinance is the greatest. That's also where the fencing requirement is most significant. And that's the, that's the fencing issue that was postponed by the planning commission until their next meeting on May 14. So that has yet to be, that particular waiver has yet to be addressed and decided upon.
Is the, is a representative available to discuss?
He does not seem to be on the, on the list of attendees.
Is this, is this something we could put a placeholder in and readdress when we're in more normal conditions?
If it's something that, certainly, if, if the council's desirous of postponing this, need, if you need more information, all of that can certainly be, be done.
There certainly seems to be a good amount of council members with questions, including myself and citizens as well.
I would be in support of that.
So do we have a motion in a second, too?
So right now we have a motion in a second to approve what somebody, whoever made the motion, if you want to withdraw it, so then someone could move to postpone this to a date certain.
Okay. Valerie, could you tell us who made the motion in second?
Dixon made the motion and Smith seconded.
Okay. Just Stephen, if we draw to a certain date certain.
Whoever would like to make a motion to postpone to a date certain.
All right, so Mr. Dixon has withdrawn. Do we need a second for that, Jim? We don't need a second. So the motion has been withdrawn. Now do we have a motion to postpone to a date certain?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this to a date certain. First, I'd like to ask a precursor question. When do we anticipate being back in council chambers as a unified body and not on a digital platform?
That's a great question, Ms. Witten. I think we've, the governor's orders coming up soon will have a lot to do with that. I mean, I, I'd like to think in May we're doing it, but maybe the second meeting in May, we're back in normal situation.
Okay, so then I would like to postpone this item to a date certain of May the 19th.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to postpone this until May the 19th. Any other comments or questions in the council? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, we'll take this up on May the 19th.
And Mayor, those are all the items we have on the regular agenda, but we have one item of other business that we came up with during the regular council meeting.
Okay. That is.
Pardon me?
What is that item?
That was the discussion about the loan program, taking those items individually or not.
Okay, all right, so we'll open it up for discussion on whether to take the, make changes to the loan program to approve these individually. Brett, I think you were the last one to speak to this and made, made a motion to continue to talk. If you don't mind, I'll, I'll ask you to begin this conversation now.
Well, I, one question I have is, how is, how's the health of the program and do we anticipate, is this just the first wave? I mean, we may not know that. I mean, how, where are we at with looking at additional applications under this program?
So we definitely have loans that will come to you at your first meeting in May. How many, we're not certain right now. Probably another five or six. We don't know, there are two things that have to happen. We have to get the loans in from the bank and they have to all be approved first by the bank, then they have to be verified by us. Then we have a two week period of advertisement before they come to you. So we do know that at least in May, the first meeting in May, you will have some to do. Maybe five or six. I would have to check to make sure. We don't know after that how many will come. There may be a lot, there may not be.
And, and on the future agenda, we would see kind of, as it were, like a river banking trust. And then we'd vote again for another business. And then depending on our local vendor or bank institution, it would be a line item on our agenda in the future.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I, I, well, I guess my question is, we, we're not approving all the applications for Bankor South into the future. We're just going to be approving a loan agreement for a third party, which is the business through Bankor South or Southern States Bank. Is that right?
I, I think.
I may not be, let me, let me try again. So on our next, a next agenda, if Southern States Bank has more applicants that have been approved, we're going to see Southern States Bank again as a line item on our agenda.
Unless you change it, yes, that's what, what you will see.
And, and even, even all the vendors that offered tonight. And and even even all the vendors that offer tonight, we would if they all have more approvals, we would see Riverbank and Trust. And beside that would be that particular applicant's name.
Correct.
OK. So so if we were to break it out like Councilman Griswold said, it would it's really would just be an efficiency thing for our agenda. Is that a fair statement? It's not going to affect the application process or it would only ultimately just be a speed and efficiency thing for council meeting.
Correct.
OK.
Well, I mean, but I have a question on that because if our agreement is with the land institute, the financial institution, and we have financial institution A for loan items one through six, then we're in essence saying we approve A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Then we if we get into G and we don't agree with the business that G has or holds, or we scrutinize their ownership and where they may or may not live, even though they hold their business and they pay proper taxes and they have a business license within our city limits. Are we are we going to be scrutinized if we tell them no because they meet our criteria? I mean, we're we're in essence getting into individual businesses, financial issues. When I thought the whole portion of this was to say, we acknowledge that businesses A through Z are going to apply for a loan with Bank A. And then Bank A is, we agree that those all meet the criteria and we say yes or no as a formality, not business C isn't, we don't like them.
But but that's that's two different questions, though. I think
It's a lot of questions.
Yeah, no, I mean, the the approval process, what we've put in place as an ordinance is one thing and their requirements. But I mean, I think if a council member wants to discuss an individual applicant, they have that authority or that right. So I mean, I I in that right, I understand Councilman Griswold's point that i- if we vote on a Southern States Bank this week and there's another Southern States Bank next week, I mean, we're going to vote, I'm just using them as an example, any of our institutional banks. But I mean, I I can understand just wanting to pull all those out. I mean, even if it's just a vote on each of those. If it's just an efficiency, if if the reason we've got it together is for efficiency purposes.
Well, my my question is, what are we trying to? What are we trying to gain by separating them out and discussing them individually? They've met our criteria. We've entered into an agreement with a lending institution that does this every single day. They're certifying that they meet our two two requirements. We're in no position to discuss it or deny it just because they operate somewhere else. They've they've met our criteria. And if my popsicle stand has has branches across the country, I'm still in my but I'm my business is based in Auburn and I have an Auburn business license. That's all we that's all we're worried about.
Yeah, and I agree.
How are you gonna? If we spend another two and a half hour meeting discussing Jay's popsicle stand in Texas, but I still qualify for the program, how are we going to deny it? And that's I just feel like we're getting into a conversation that we we really have no no right to be in.
And I and I agree with you, Jay. If we've met the criteria, then they need to be they need to be approved. And it's a relationship with the individual institution. But I also think if, you know, as a council member, if if they want to pull one out, we'll just vote on each of them individually. I mean, it may be simply, OK, let's pull these out. Is bank is this met the criteria? Yes, and then we vote on it. So I mean, if that's council, and I'm putting words in Councilman Griswold's mouth, but not meaning to, but I I can understand his position on that. And I think chiefs have mentioned that as well.
Well, if we're not going to talk worry about who they are, then don't even tell us. If we're just going to abrogate everything to the bank, then let's let the bank drive on. You know, if if it's just a rubber stamp that we're going to approve whatever they have approved, then let's not even talk about it. But I would love to see the actual criteria in writing. If you if Mr. Boston would be so kind as to forward that to to the council members, I would appreciate that. But again, if if we're not going to, you know, if we're not going to question anything, then let's not question anything. Just take their names off of it, we'll approve before every week and be done with it. If that's if that's what everybody wants to do. I kind of thought we had a responsibility to safeguard the interest that the citizens of Auburn were paying. I don't have any questions about the loans. Banks can make any kind of loan they choose to. But if we're going to be on the hook for the interest, I thought it was our business. But apparently I'm a Lone Ranger on this. So again, if if we're not going to do it, let's just rubber stamp it and move on.
Perry, if I may, I I agree with what Councilman Hovey and person Whitten have said, but I think my my point is right in line with Brett's. I I don't think I would ever voted to deny the funds, but however, I think the Councilman Griswold deserves the right to to has the right to question the loan and say what he wants to say. That's my point. Whoever it be, any council person has a right to be heard.
And that's not what I mean, absolutely, everybody, each one of us has that right. But are you going to pull out a business, separate them out intentionally and discuss them because you have an issue with them? And then in essence, try to say, we don't agree with your business practices or where you operate outside of Auburn, so therefore we're going to tell you no. So if we tell them no, which is our right to do, then we should just be ready to potentially have a lawsuit. And that's fine. I mean, it's it's fine. It's just to me, it's the ordinance was set up to be an arrangement with the banks and not with individual businesses. And that is who our arrangement is with. And it makes
I think you're I'm sorry, I think you're right. I I agree with what you're saying. I can't ever see myself voting against giving the loan. But however, I do feel like whether it's you or Mr. Griswold or Brett or whoever, I think you got a right to be heard. That's my only only thing.
I agree. I agree with that, too. My 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 statement is on procedural grounds procedurally. Not necessarily the merit of the each application at all, because I think they've been vetted. They'll have been vetted at that point.
Yeah, then just don't tell us, you know, just do it. You know, if you put down McDonald's and I guess just because there happened to be some McDonald's in Auburn, that would be fine. But McDonald's Corporation asks for a no interest loan from us, and they happen to have an outlet here, then I guess they're they're good to go. But, you know, again, it's obvious that that I'm not going to carry the day on this. And looking at individual applicants after the bank has already done their share of it is going to be a waste of time and effort by this council. So I appreciate those of you that support my ability to or my my right to actually speak up on this. But it's it's apparent that we're simply rubber stamping whatever comes to us. So let's not let's not bother.
Oh, I'd just like to add, Kelly. If I understand your intent, which I believe I do, which is the idea that this this program was intended for the little guy. The little guy is a very, very hard to define. And I'm certainly I have full confidence that every member of this council supports the little guy.
Absolutely.
And our definitions of what that little guy is probably differ. And I think that's the ground that we're treading on to some degree. And I I I do support the idea that each loan be separated, that we can look at them. And it may be my own naivety as as to how the business world functions, and forgive me for that. But there is definitely a perception in the public sphere of what the little guy is. And and it's going to differ for everyone, but there's a generality to it, which is a small locally owned business. But that's not necessarily the definition that the banks are making. And I think that's I think that's where we're hovering around. And make no mistake, I I I will support each and every one of these with the full confidence that that the banks know what they're doing and they have some criteria. But I do I do understand where you're coming from and and I appreciate you speaking.
Any other comments or questions?
And I understand, too. I'm not. I mean, I appreciate fiscal prudence immensely. And I think we do have that that responsibility, Kelly. I agree with you 1,000%. It's just that in this instance, I don't think that discussing individual loan, that we're not going to gather enough information on that night to make a decision on denial is worth bringing them up in the public and discussing them individually. You bring you mentioned McDonald's, and that's a great example. You know, McDonald's are owned by a local family, our our local McDonald's. And so, you know, that's a family that's operating their business here in Auburn and may have, you know, another location in Montgomery or Columbus. But I don't think that discounts their ability to take advantage of a program that we've got for for local businesses, subways, McDonald's, hotels, whatever the case may be. You know, they're still a member of our Auburn business community and or they wouldn't qualify or even be on our docket.
And and I don't I don't think we want to dip into picking winners and losers. I think that we'd be on legally shaky ground doing so. I think this the ideas for the public good, the general public good with this program.
As I said earlier, I I'm fully in support of this program and along the lines of what Bob was saying. But I thought we were taking steps to help the little guy, however that happens to be defined. And when I was reading through this, I didn't find the particular applicant as being in that category of of my judgment. Now, that's why I asked, I'd love to see the the actual hand or hard copy written criteria is to which, you know, what what satisfies our needs for us to spend Auburn citizens' money? I would love to see that. But Beth mentioned a minute ago is a formality. I agree at this point, it is a we're simply a rubber stamp. So we're spending a lot of time on something that that I think is not going to go very far, so.
Jim, as far as the criteria and the and the due diligence that's done on this, is there is there any explanation or any information that could be provided to the council that we don't have right now to understand?
It was in your packet and it was from the resolution you passed.
Nothing in our packet on that.
The criteria is in your packet. Basically, the two items are, are you a business in the city of Auburn? And trying to find the one I just read to you. Do you verify that you need this money to continue your business to and use it in the city of Auburn? I mean, that's those are the two criteria. And you say you do you are. It says the applicant certifies that this loan and interest subsidy support is necessary to remain in business within the city of Auburn upon commencement of normal operations. That's one of the criteria. The other criteria is, is your business in the city of Auburn? And as Councilman Whitney said, do you pay taxes in Auburn? Do you have an actual location in the in the corporate limits of Auburn?
You know, the whole purpose of this was to help businesses, but the whole purpose of this also is to help our city maintain sales taxes and occupational taxes and business permits and and property taxes. And that's that's what I believe we're doing. We're helping a business, but also helping our city maintain a business that has been a revenue supplier for us to use to provide services for our community. You know, we've got a we've got a statement here that has been signed by these business owners that says that they are in Auburn, and this is for a business in Auburn. And if they if they were to not agree to this or to act unethically, Jim, what what would be the repercussions for them?
So that's what I read previously, section 13A 10 1098 of the state code lists the crime of unscored falsification to authorities. We have our city attorney on the line. He can answer that question if you'd like him to.
OK. Mr. Davidson, are you on the line still?
As I said, gentlemen, there's really no, excuse me, there's really no reason to pursue this any further, you know?
It looks like the city attorney is not on the line.
Well, I I think there is a reason to pursue this a little bit more because there's been an implication that this is picking winners and losers and the little guy doesn't have an opportunity. That that's extremely offensive. It's a it's a wonderful program that a lot of people put a lot of hard work into. I mean, I I find it rich that certain people have been yelling about closing businesses down in our community and now trying to act like they support this. It's it's just disappointing. And I understand a councilman's right to talk about these, and that's what they're supposed to do. If they want to vote down supporting a business or vote, you know, that's their choice and the public will hold them to account later. But the idea or the implication that we're picking people over others and the subtle idea here is just it's it's disturbing. And it this is, we're in a very difficult time in our community right now, and we're all trying to pull together. And I'm just I'm I'm sick of that attitude. I'm sick. I'm just it frustrates me.
And I want to make real clear about something. I mean, no implication whatsoever that we're picking winners and losers or that I didn't approve this program. If you'll note, I've said on multiple occasions, I'm fully behind this program. And in fact, I voted for the program when item number whenever the loan number four came up, so.
No, I agree. I agree, Kelly. I completely agree.
With a brush that I'm anti-help, that I'm in a position that I don't want to help businesses because that's certainly not the case.
I understand, Kelly.
All right, any other discussion?
I can only presume that you're speaking to me for yelling on social media during a time when we were flying blind with a world pandemic, and I make no apology for that. I fully support and I look forward to the resumption of our world as soon as it can get back together. And as soon as it can get back together, I'll be out supporting every local business that I can. I think I think I think another issue that this body is faced with during this time, this peculiar time of being isolated from one another, is that we've not had the opportunity to sit in a packet meeting in a more informal setting to to get some clarification in a less in a more relaxed way. And I'm speaking specifically about the packet meeting. I've always enjoyed the opportunity to get a full explanation from our city manager about particular matters. It gives me more confidence as a new council member to deliberate with the with the full of more fuller understanding than what just the written word in a packet provides. And yes, I can certainly take up Mr. Boston's time by answering questions on the phone with him, but I I don't really want to put him in that position, given what the load that he has to carry in this particular time. So
You know, Bob, I want 100% agree with you, man. I I do think there's something to do with with us not being around each other. And and I do think, especially in an agenda like we've had tonight, that a packet meeting would have been really helpful. There's no question about that. So I certainly agree with you on that, and I look forward to the day that we could get back together and and go through our regular course of business again. I I don't think there's any question what you're saying is exactly right. Thank you for bringing it up. Anybody else? If not, do we have a move to adjourn?
No move.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for their patience and understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jim.